The Pinellas County School Board, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. This evening's invocation will be given by Pastor Oscar Banks from the Palm Lake Christian Church in St. Petersburg. The invocation will be followed by the presentation of colors by the Boca Siega High School Army ROTC, under the direction of Major Lonnie Spangler. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Ms. Lisa Kane, and the National Anthem will be sung by the Boca Siega Vocal Ensemble, under the direction of Alex Drucker. All right, please stand. And Pastor Banks, would you please share with us the invocation?
Yes, let us pray. God of all creation, we thank you for every opportunity that you allow us to be stewards over that which you have placed us over. Right now, I just pray that you will bless this body with your wisdom, with your grace, and your love as they present opportunities for our students to have spaces of grace, spaces of creativity, for them to be who they are, spaces where they can feel welcome and accepted for who they are. God, I pray over our teachers, our staff and administrators. Bless them, oh God, as we operate in this year to make it fruitful, pleasant, and productive for your children, for our children. God, we worship you for all that you are, all that you created us to be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. The color guard?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, here, colors. Flags down. Close the colors.
You may be seated. Sergeant Rodriguez was the group coordinator, and we had Cadet Benjamin Brewmeister, Cadet Bethany Wilkerson, Cadet Chris Fields, and Cadet Ariana Kittle, and last but not least, Cadet Ivana Mosley. So we thank them. Okay, and that was beautiful song done by Mr. Drucker and the entire ensemble for this beautiful Boca Siega High School. All right, now, I'd like to introduce tonight's video. This year, with Superintendent Hendrick, we are focused on the student experience, making sure our students are doing and learning things that excite them every week. So, a great example of this takes place every week at New Heights Elementary. Let's take a look at how the New Heights Hawks start off each Friday.
Every Friday, we get our sound system out.
DJ, I know this is a song. Sing it, DJ.
I've always loved music, and I think music is a good way to get people together. And we have a sound system, why not put it to work?
Ah, here comes the drop.
We get some music pumping, and the kids together, and the main goal is to create a community feeling for the kids, because I think it's really important that we feel like we're all here together.
Everybody clap your hands. Come up, come up, come up, come up.
We try and create the demand sometimes, so we'll take a week off here and there, and every Friday, it does not fail. Why didn't you play music this morning? When are you playing it again? Where was it? And then I get song requests as I walk around campus all day long as well.
All right, New Heights, this might be our last one.
The kids love dancing, you hear TikTok and all sorts of different media and things that are available to them now, and that's their life. So let's incorporate it here at school, because this has to be somewhere where they want to come every day. It's controlled chaos, and it's well worth it, because the smiles on their faces heading back to class and the excitement when they're here.
All right. That's definitely where I want to be on Friday mornings. Thank you to Principal Bollinger for creating such a memorable experience for his students. They looked like they were having fun, they got some energy out, they were upbeat for the beginning of school, so, great video. Okay, now, our Public Information Officer, Isabel Mascheranes, will introduce our professional and community organizations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hendrick and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. Representing the Pinellas Educational Support Professionals Association, or PESPA, we have Nellie Higuenes, President. From the classroom, from the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, we have Nancy Velardi, President. From the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, we have Maria Cantonas, Committee Member. Members of the media in attendance, we have Shannon Klow from Ten Tampa Bay. Today, we have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome Alicia Mitchell and Sam Singh, from Boca Siega High School, and their principal, Jennifer Gill.
Greetings, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Hendrick, and staff members. Before I begin, I want to say thank you so much for having me. I am honored to be here. I want to give a quick shout out to, a quick shout out to the Principal of Boca Siega High, Ms. Gill, for choosing me as a candidate to speak to you guys today. Let me introduce myself. My name is Alicia Mitchell. I am a senior at the Boca Siega Senior High School, ranked top ten percent in my class of three hundred and forty-four. I am a member of the CWMP Medical Magnet Program, currently on my journey to obtain my CNA license by the end of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. A little about the CWMP program is it's a program for students who are interested in potentially getting a career in the healthcare field. In this program, you can earn a variety of certifications, such as bloodborne pathogens, CPR, basic first aid, and more. We have two dress-out days a week to simulate a medical field environment. On Tuesdays, we wear scrubs, and Thursdays, we wear professional dress, which is our CWMP polo shirt with khaki pants. We take a variety of classes such as anatomy in ninth and eleventh grade, whereas ninth grade being the basics of it, and eleventh grade going a bit more in depth. We also take Health Science Foundations, Allied Health, and our grand choice in our senior year of taking EKG or CNA. By the end of your CNA, by the end of your senior year in this program, if you followed through with all requirements, completed a total of two hundred volunteer hours, and passed your exam, you leave out of the program with a license and can practice EKG or CNA, almost already guaranteeing us entry-level jobs as soon as we walk out those doors. I'd a hundred percent recommend this program to anyone, and it can be challenging, but it'll be something that will pay off in the end. A few things I was involved in during my high school experience is I am involved in NHS, and I am currently running for office, as well as I participated in ROTC in things such as parades and Toys for Tots with them. Certifications I earned consisted of bloodborne pathogens, as well as I am CPR certified. A handy non-medical certification I have as well is in Microsoft Word. My post-secondary plan will be to start a two-year degree at SBC and transfer to a university, most likely USF. Throughout that time, I'll be working to obtain my doctor of pharmacy degree.
Good evening. My name is Sam Singh, and I'm in the eleventh grade at Boca Siega High School. I'm a part of the fundamental program, which means we have a structured environment and a back-to-basics approach focusing on student responsibility as well as self-discipline. After graduation, my plan is to further my education in college by getting a creative writing or a liberal arts degree to help me master my craft of writing, as I'm currently working on my debut novel, and I also write songs. I would minor in business administration, so I can learn entrepreneurial strategies to help with the publishing and advertising for both my books as well as my music. Being at Boca Siega, I've been able to take advantage of college-level courses, such as Writing Composition One and Two, to further my love of writing. I've also taken advantage of the opportunity to learn TV and music production and sound engineering to further a possible career in journalism and music. Taking AP and dual enrollment classes have prepared me for college in both rigor and content. I have taken AP Human Geography, Psychology, World History, and this year, I'm taking AP English Literature and AP US History. I'm also taking college courses in US government and world religions this year. The class selections Boca Siega High School offers are endless. I'm involved in student government, elected Student Rights and Responsibilities Liaison, TRIAM president this year, and quartermaster in marching band. Last year, our marching band and concert band received excellent marks, as well as a superior for our sight reading. I have been on the principal's list every grading period and received the AP Scholar Award. I've also earned my certification in Autodesk through our school's engineering program, and I'm in the top five percent of my class and maintain a four-point-four-five GPA.
Boca Siega overall is an amazing school. The school consists of three programs. We now have a program named CSL, which stands for Creators, Scholars, and Leaders. This is a program where Boca Siega Pirates identify which curricular pathway that best suits their interests. Boca Siega is a wall-to-wall academy model school, which means that each student belongs to a small community that aligns with their interests. Each academy offers opportunities for interest certifications and college credit. Our vision is one hundred percent student success. We have a variety of ways to try to meet those things by providing us tutoring after school free of charge if we need it. Students are able to talk to just about any adult about anything. They provide safe learning environments, knowledgeable teachers, and makes us take rigorous classes to push ourselves. Some highlights throughout the school year consisted of a previous graduate of Class of two thousand and twenty-two, Senior Nia Mitchell, set a school record in the three hundred hurdles, and then proceeded to break her own record three times. Boca Siega earned district runner-ups in varsity football, volleyball, girls' basketball, and track and field. We also had state competitors in swimming, ROTC, theater, wrestling, and again, in track and field. Me personally, what I like most about Bogey is the school's strive in academics. This is one school I can't say didn't push me. Sometimes I was in classes that I didn't even know if I could handle. Just about majority of typical high schoolers' thing is to do is to run to the counselor and ask for a schedule change when we think something is too hard. Bogey didn't let me do that. My counselors would look me in my eyes and tell me, Alicia, you can do this. You'll thank me later. And like she would tell me, I would make it through every single time. Bogey is a school where they're going to push you to make you take that class that you think is too hard for you, because just about every adult in there knows we can do it. Sometimes we just need the words of encouragement, and they'll give you that and more.
I feel Boca Siega High School offers so many opportunities to every student, from music to medical to JROTC, and theater languages, engineering sciences, honors and AP classes, as well as dual enrollment classes with St. Pete College. A student that applies themselves at Boca Siega High School will build a very strong foundation for their future. Last year, Senior Dominica Giazzoni was honored for his national recognition as a commended student by the College Board for scoring within the top three percent on the PSAT. And last year, our avid four students received over two-point-five million dollars in scholarship money. Boca Siega High School prepares us for college, career, and life. High school grows you into the person that you are becoming. After high school, it becomes life, so we have to be sure to get everything out of high school that we can, and Boca Siega gives us every opportunity to do that. Ask the stupid question, learn as much as you can, and grab every opportunity the school offers you that interests you. Going to a school at a place like Boca Siega compels students to get up every morning, show up, and take advantage of every opportunity presented to us. We also have a great administrative staff willing to answer any question and steer us in the right direction, because they want nothing more than to see us succeed. Thank you so much for having us this evening. Are there any questions?
I, I have a comment. First of all, what a great presentation.
Thank you.
You are the first high school this year, so you have set the bar very high.
Thank you.
So all the other high schools, if you're listening, you're going to have to come with your full game. Is your principal, Jennifer Gill, here?
Yes, ma'am.
Please stand. What a You should be very proud of your students. This was wonderful. Both of you, I know you can be very successful in life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. Mr. Hendrick, are there any recommended changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are two recommended changes to the agenda. The first is seven-point-three Personnel Recommendations. Pulling one of the recommendations from the administrative agenda related to Robert Gagnon, the board has already approved that, and the information was incorrect, so that needs to be taken off. And seven-point-one-nine is a recommendation for principal at Oldsmar Elementary. The previous principal resigned, and we wanted to fill that as quickly as possible. And so that recommendation is before you tonight. Both have also been posted online.
Okay, I find good cause to amend the agenda. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, Ms. Edmund, I saw your light.
I would like to pull Consent Agenda Item seven-fifteen for further discussion.
Seven-fifteen, okay. All right. I find good cause to amend the agenda as described by Mr. Hendrick and Ms. Edmund. Do I have a motion? Okay, Ms. Heine, do I have a second? Ms. Cook? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any nay? Okay, it passes seven to nothing. All right, so moving right along. We're going to go to our Special Order Agenda. The first is a presentation of the Proclamation Designating September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Do I have a motion?
For approval?
All right. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and in addition to having our students back, we're back to proclamations during the regular school year, our first regular board meeting, so I want to call up Michelle Anderson, our K-eight Social Studies Specialist, to do the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Mr. Hendrick and staff, good afternoon. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. The observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. It was enacted into law on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty-eight, on the Approval of Public Law one hundred dash four oh two. President George H.W. Bush issued the first proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month on September fourteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. The day of September fifteenth is significant, because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth, respectively. Also, Columbus Day, or Dia de la Raza, which is October twelfth, falls within this thirty-day period. Pinellas County Schools supports and promotes Hispanic Heritage Month. Our teachers have received curriculum support through a variety of means. We look forward to seeing our schools' cultures grow in support of all ethnic groups as they highlight the contributions and achievements of our Hispanic and Latino countrymen and women. Thank you for your support of this annual event.
Okay, Dr. Carr, will you read the proclamation?
Thank you. Thank you for the historical background and information. Proclamation, National Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas our nation has drawn strength from the diversity of our people, with faith and passion, a sturdy work ethic, and profound devotion to family, Hispanics have helped carry forward our legacy as a vibrant beacon of opportunity for all. Whether their ancestors have been here for generations, or they are among the newest members of our American family, they represent many countries and cultures, each adding their own distinct and dynamic perspective to our country's story. In celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor the contributions Hispanics have made throughout our history, and we highlight an important part of the rich diversity that keeps our communities strong. And whereas this month, let us reflect on the countless ways in which Hispanics have contributed to our nation's success, and let us reaffirm our commitment to expanding opportunity and building an ever-brieter future for all. Let us embrace the diversity that strengthens us, and continue striving to ensure the American dream is within reach for generations of Hispanics to come. And whereas Congress has authorized and requested the President to issue annually a proclamation designating September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month, now, therefore, the Pinellas County School Board does hereby recognize September fifteenth through October fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two as Hispanic Heritage Month, and urge all citizens to join in a national effort to recognize the contributions made and the importance of the presence, the importance, presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States, and celebrate their heritage and culture. Thank you.
Are there any comments by the board? All right, with that, I'd like to take a vote on the presentation of the Proclamation declaring September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as Hispanic Heritage Month. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes. Okay, our next item is Presentation of the Proclamation Designating the Month of September, two thousand and twenty-two as American Founders Month. September seventeenth as Constitution Day, and September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, and the last full week of September as Celebration Month, or Celebration Week. I need a motion. Ms. Kane, a second. Ms. Heine, all right. And it is Mrs. Cook that's going to read this one.
Do we have anybody to introduce it?
Yes, we do.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Hendrick.
We do. Each of these come together into form into one, a number of proclamations, both state and federal. And so to call up and discuss those is Mr. Matt Bloom, our high school social studies specialist. Mr. Bloom?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Mr. Hendrick and staff. Pinellas County Schools proudly supports American Founders Month during the month of September, celebrate Freedom Week in Florida during the last full week in September, and Constitution Day on September seventeenth, which kicks off Constitution Week each year. The celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution in nineteen fifty-five. The DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September seventeenth to the twenty-third annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. That resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August second, nineteen fifty-six, by Dwight D. Eisenhower. Florida was one of the first states in the country to officially recognize Celebrate Freedom Week in two thousand and two. Since then, many states have passed legislation officially recognizing Celebrate Freedom Week as a week-long recognition of American values contained in our founding documents. While social studies teachers guide students through in-depth lessons throughout the year on the founding of our country, this month, week, and day serves as a special time where we can continue to educate our students and community about the sacrifices made for freedom and the founding of this country and the principles on which this country was founded. American Founders Month, Celebrate Freedom Week, and Constitution Day and Week resources are able to be used by schools and teachers in a wide variety of ways to encourage or to engage students. Examples include morning announcements on the history of the American flag, or trivia questions about our founding fathers and documents. Social studies teachers or social studies classes around the county take a deeper look at founding documents like the Constitution and Declaration of Independence to understand how they continue to shape and influence our country today. Through this work, we are fortunate to have wonderful support from our community. Over the years, we've had support for professional development and resources from our local Florida Sons of the American Revolution organization to help engage students in understanding our founding fathers. The Daughters of the American Revolution have been able to provide a wealth of additional resources and lesson plan ideas that could be used at all levels by our teachers. And we continue to strengthen our professional development for teachers with support from our Florida Department of Education Civic Literacy Captain and Coach, as well as the Bill of Rights Institute. Students across the county in middle and high school civics and government courses also have access to pocket constitutions that support deep dives into their course standards and benchmarks. And the K-12 Social Studies Department is excited to be restarting our Constitutional Conversation Video Series found on our PCS YouTube page. In this series, Pinellas County and Bay Area government leaders help students learn about different elements of the US Constitution, the importance of understanding its origin, and why it's important in our everyday lives. Thank you for your continued support of these annual events.
I have a, I have a comment now, Ms. Cook. Can I make a comment? Okay, good, thank you. American Founders Month, Constitutional Day and Week, and Celebrate Freedom Week, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas during American Founders Month, Constitution Day and Week, and Celebrate Founders Week, we focus on better understanding of the nation's founding fathers and the sacrifices made for freedom that hold a special place in history of the United States of America and the state of Florida. Whereas during the month of September, all civic, fraternal, and religious organizations, as well as public and private education institutions, are urged to recognize and observe American Founders Month, Constitutional Day and Week, and Celebrate Freedom Week through appropriate programs, services, celebrations, in which state, county, and local governmental officials are invited to participate. And whereas during American Founders And whereas during American Founders Month, all schools at grade levels are encouraged to dive deeply into the history of our nation's founding fathers and the intent, meaning, and purpose of the importance of the American founding documents. Now, therefore, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby proclaim September, two thousand twenty-two, as American Founders Month, Constitution Day, which is September seventeenth, and Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-third, and the last full week of September as Celebrate Freedom Week. Signed this thirteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-two. Dr. Carr?
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanna acknowledge and say thank you to our social studies, history supervisors who are both here for all the hard work they've done. And I'd be remiss with such a large audience, I count over, I mean, I don't know all of you who are here, but over a half dozen of you who are actually history teachers in the room tonight. So thank you for your work in ensuring that this proclamation and for the ongoing professional development that you've had to acquire this year to overcome some of the performative rhetoric that's gone on and how much I appreciate you and in this proclamation. So, thank you.
Any other board comments? All right. We're gonna take a vote on the presentation of the proclamation designating the month of September twenty twenty-two as the American Founders Month. September seventeenth is Constitution Day, September seventeenth to the twenty-third, and Constitution Week, and the last full week of September as to celebrate Freedom Week. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Okay. Public comments on the agenda items. Mrs. Hope, we have speakers? All right. Members of the public have three separate opportunities to address the board when we gather for a business meeting. The first is public comment on agenda items. The second is at public hearings, most of which are policies. And the last is after our meeting, when speakers may address the general business of the district. At each opportunity for public input, board members are here to listen to you. This is not a time for us to discuss or debate. However, the board and the superintendent may clarify statements or refer the speaker to the proper staff person to help them work through any concerns. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. We appreciate you assisting us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment. So with that, Mrs. Howe? Do we have any speakers?
Oh, we do not have any speakers for item six point one.
Okay.
Oh, but we do have speaker, we do have one speaker for item eight point one and seven point one two. Mr. Mark Clutho.
Okay. Mr. Clutho? Ah, there he is.
Mark Clutho Largo, seven point one two. New roofs on the buildings. All I'll say here is, bad buildings. Bad buildings. Eight point one, request approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three district strategic plan. A word you shouldn't be able to use here. Strategic. Strategy? No. Goals, six of them. Strategic direction. Student achievement. Learning in a safe environment. Equity with excellence for all. Career and college readiness. Effective and efficient use of resources. Communication and stakeholder engagement. What a joke. Now, especially when you're talking about equity with excellence for all and safe environment and efficient use of resources. Now, if that was true, we wouldn't have headlines like I'm going to read now. The key word here is correlation. You with your sick buildings. Like, the most recent. That building up at Clearwater High School with all that west glass. Headline here, study Thwaites Glacier mapping shows ice loss. Warning, found likely to set off tipping points. Long-term effects on life on Earth beyond a one point five degree warm-up. Stark warnings for the warming planet. U.N. report spells out dire consequences of climate change.
CO2 level highest in human history.
Thank you.
Report, sea rise is clear and present risk.
Mr. Clutho, your time has expired, Mr. Clutho. Three minutes has expired. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch more. But strategic.
Are there any other speakers on agenda items?
No, Madam Chair, there are no more speakers for agenda items.
Okay, let's move on to unfinished business. Public hearing to consider the amendment to Policies fourteen thirty point oh two. Sick leave administration. Fourteen thirty point oh four, personnel leave administration. Thirty-four thirty point oh two, sick leave instructional staff. Thirty-four thirty point oh four, personal leave instructional staff. Forty-four point oh two, sick leave support staff. And forty-four thirty point oh four, personal leave support staff. This is the second reading, and there are no more changes, but I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hendrick first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're right, this is the second reading. It's also been at a workshop. I'm gonna pass it to our Chief Strategy and Impact Officer, Ms. Jennifer Dull, to explain the policy and call for vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Hendrick, staff, and community, and board members. Tonight, we're here for second reading and the public hearing for the policies that I will not rename over as Madam Chair just put forward. These policies did come to workshop on June twenty-eighth and were for first reading on July twelfth. There are no changes since that first reading. Overall, the presented amendments in all of these are aligned now with our current collective bargaining agreements and approved applicable policies and were also amended for clarity and for consistency. In March and April of twenty twenty-two, these align with the PESPA and PCTA agreements that updated the benefits related to terminal pay and personal leave with pay. Specifically, percentages paid out for unused accrued sick leave were adjusted. Employees will now be paid out a hundred percent of unused sick leave at twenty-five years and more. That was previously at thirty years. Other percentage adjustments were updated and aligned with statutory guidelines. And additionally, additionally, the personal leave and pay benefit was increased from four days to five days. There was some discussion at the June workshop, so I wanna make sure I say this publicly. There was a distinction and discussion about the difference between personal and sick time versus PTO. And those distinctions are statutory. The policy has also been reorganized to combine terminal pay for retirement and death and just reducing redundancy within the policy. So with that, I bring you for board approval of all of these policies.
Okay, I need a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Edman. All right, are there any comments on the board? All right, then.
Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting, and there are no speakers to this public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, it passes seven to nothing. Okay, consent. We need a motion?
Move approval of consent agenda?
Ms. Hind, you second? Okay. All right. Ms. Edman, you pulled seven point fifteen.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herbig and Mr. Hendrick, for including this item.
Mrs. Edman, I'm sorry, I apologize. Why don't we clean up and take a vote on the consent agenda item absent seven fifteen? Thank you.
Okay. So everything but seven fifteen, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, it passes seven to nothing. All right, Ms. Edman.
Thank you very much for bringing this item forward. I just had one comment regarding the lease for this agenda item, seven fifteen. It is stated under the third whereas that the services being provided will be to middle school students. And it has been clarified that it will be both for elementary and middle school students. So with approval, if that's the way to do it, Mr. Keverson.
I'm sorry, I apologize again. We need a motion to put the main item on the table, and then I would anticipate that Mrs. Edman is gonna make a motion to amend, but we have to have something to amend.
Okay, motion?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to accept item seven point one five.
Okay, and second?
Second.
Dr. Carr? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to amend the lease agreement to strike middle school from the third whereas.
Okay. All in favor of Mr. Hendrick?
If I may, Madam Chair, just wanted to clarify, I've spoken to the Shirley Proctor Puller Foundation. They're okay with this amendment, as is staff.
Any other comments?
One more comment. The Shirley Proctor Puller Foundation in this lease agreement is going to allow greater access to academic tutoring in our Community Resource Center located at the John Hopkins Middle School. So I am very proud and thank you very much for bringing this item forward.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And the board approves the motion to amend? So now we can move on to take a vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of the approved amended agenda? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, it passes. Okay. Move down to non-consent. This is the request approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three district strategic plan. Do I have a motion? Ms. Kane, a second? Ms. Cook? Okay, Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to bring the twenty-two, twenty-three district strategic plan to the board and to the public tonight. It likewise has been addressed at workshops, and I wanna thank members of our board for giving us input on these, as well as members of the public who have been able to provide input to this plan in a variety of ways at our Let's Talk platform, as well as at the Listen and Learn sessions that we've been having across our district. A copy of the plan is on board docs and is available. All one hundred and sixty-one goals that we're focusing on as a school district. And so I wanna pass it back to Ms. Jennifer Dull, our Chief Strategy and Impact Officer, for a deeper explanation.
Thank you very much. This is one of my favorite times of year to come forward before the board to bring forward the district strategic plan for approval. As Mr. Hendrick noted, we brought this forward as a draft in June, but it didn't come from just work that had started in June. We take feedback all year long from members of the public, from staff, from board members as we make this update to the board annually. We also brought it back for, on public review at the July workshop and now bringing forward for your review and approval for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. What you will notice, there are not major changes to the strategic directions. However, there are new goals and they are in alignment with the work we have done together, as well as feedback we have received as Mr. Hendrick came on board. So with that, I would also like to thank my colleagues who have worked very hard on this and specifically like to shout out Leanna Eisen, our Director of Strategic Planning and Policy, as well as Libby Jordan, who has been the graphic designer to make this book more accessible to the public and really highlighting some of the work that has been done as a part of our monitoring systems we have in place for all of the one hundred and sixty-one goals within the district strategic plan.
Thank you, Ms. Dull. This is, this is one of the best district strategic plans I have seen. Very thorough. I know you all put in a lot of work, and we've discussed it so many times at the workshops. So thank you for your hard work. Ms. Kane?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you and thank staff for doing such an incredible job. It's one of the best documents I've seen in a while. And I just, this is a great time of year for us to go over all of those strategic goals throughout the district and to make it more understandable for the public to, when they're looking at our plan. And I just think this plan is really, really well done and puts forth a lot of great information about our district that I think clarified it, the way that it was done and with our graphics and the way that it was kind of redesigned a little bit. I just absolutely love it and thank you to you and to the entire staff behind it who put countless hours into making this what it is. Thank you.
It would be remiss if I didn't mention that schools also, as they develop their school improvement plans, they align to this as well as along with the budget. And the school improvement plans will come to you for approval at the next board meeting.
Okay, Dr. Carr?
Thank you, reiterating the gratitude for all the hard work and also really looking forward to when the measures are available of our progress so it can continue to be an ongoing progress monitoring document on our behalf. So I know we've had a couple of years where there wasn't sufficient data produced from the state or other points and really looking forward to seeing all those outcome measures readily available in the future.
Any other comments? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three district strategic plan, say aye?
Aye.
And it passes seven to nothing. All right. All right, new business. Items introduced by the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of updates from the last couple of weeks and some things to look forward to. This last weekend, it was my pleasure to attend the Pinellas County Council of PTA's annual training and kickoff for the school year. Always an energetic crowd of parents, booster club members, principals, even students there to kick off the school year. Thank you to Mrs. Cook for doing one of the trainings for parents and members of the PTA. I wanna thank President Christina Garcia and their entire board for the commitment to Pinellas County Schools. Last weekend also, I had the pleasure of attending the USF football game representing our school district for Extra Yard for Teachers Week. We had a lot of Pinellas County Schools teachers there. The College of Education had a big tailgate for our teachers. The rain held off, the humidity did not. But nonetheless, it was a great event for our teachers, celebrating educators across our district and all local districts. And I wanna thank the USF College of Education and Dean Roll for his continued support. Over the last couple of weeks, our students have been introduced for the first time to the Florida Assessment for Student Thinking, the new FAST assessments that many in the public have heard about. This is the new state assessment, and it is progress monitoring, so it's now taken three times a year. As I've mentioned from this seat a couple of times and in workshops many times, it is different than previous assessments that we have taken from the state, which occurred just once at the end of the year. The progress monitoring assessments start now, it'll happen again in December, and one more time at the end of the year. This year is a transition year for these assessments. And so as in a transition, as the state is testing out new items and aligning these to standards, the assessments this year are longer than they'll be in future years. And so students are sitting for ninety-minute, hundred-minute assessments as required by these new FAST assessments. We did communicate with all parents whose children are taking one of those assessments this weekend, sent all parents an email through School Messenger, letting them know how they could see their results. They're uploaded into the parent portal site. Those results are turned around, supposed to be within a couple of hours, but are ending up being a couple of days for the state to get those back to us. But parents can see those in the parent portal site, and we've sent that communication out to every parent, and you can also find it on our website. We are also hosting a Facebook Live event on September twenty-first for parents to ask questions about those results and anything they might have about the FAST assessment. So look forward to that, you'll find the link. So look forward to that, you'll find the link on the district website. Wanted to provide a bargaining update to the board and to the public. We continue with our bargaining sessions with all of our unions, but happy to say that with SEIU, we did reach a tentative agreement on Friday, including the following provisions. A salary increase of four point two-five percent, or an increase to fifteen dollars per hour, whichever is greater, retroactive to July first. A one-time payment of four hundred and fifty dollars to each employee, covered in the SEIU bargaining unit. One hundred percent coverage by the school board in the increase in healthcare costs for each employee in the bargaining unit. A change in title and job classification and pay for elementary school plant operations specialist to an elementary night foreman position. The change in terminal pay that the board just voted on was also included in this tentative agreement. We hope to bring it to you on September twenty-seventh after ratification by SEIU for approval. We continue to bargain with PESPA, PCTA, and the FOP units, and have a lot of things scheduled with them. PESPA again tomorrow morning, PCTA as well. I've personally met with the leadership of those organizations. It's our goal as a district and as this board to get as much money as possible to our bargaining units and to do so as quickly as possible. We appreciate each of our units, thankful to SEIU and look forward to those continued negotiations with the other units. Last week, we were notified as a district that we have been recognized by EverFi for the Empowered SEAL for the second year in a row, honoring our commitment to providing a whole child education through digital programs. EverFi is a free or, a free digital resource that provides support on a variety of topics, including math, finance, and wellness, and we use some of the curriculum included in the mandated mental health curriculum that we have from the state of Florida for bullying prevention. We do others for college readiness, financial literacy, African-American history, and many more. So we thank EverFi for that designation and our teachers and students for accessing this great curriculum. Our Pinellas Technical Colleges were recently acknowledged in a number of ways by the Tampa Bay Times, but mostly PTC earned the top People's Choice Prize for Vocational Colleges for the third year in a row in the Tampa Bay area. That includes all other surrounding districts, and we're proud of our folks at PTC, our students, our teachers, and our leaders. I want to congratulate Forest Lakes Principal Holly Huey, who was recently recognized by the Oldsmar City Council, and presented her with a Council Manager Award on behalf of the mayor, council, and city manager for her tremendous impact and the impact on student achievement and the increase in school grade at Forest Lakes. Congratulations to Holly Huey, and we thank our municipalities who take the time to recognize the schools within their cities. Want to remind the public that the Listen and Learn sessions I briefly mentioned earlier, we've had five so far since July, we have three more scheduled, they're coming up very soon, tomorrow night at Safety Harbor Middle School. Each of the sessions is focused on providing feedback to the school district in any fashion, but they also have some specific themes. Tomorrow night at Safety Harbor is focused on the staff experience and how we can continue to make things better for our staff. On Thursday night at Melrose Elementary School, the theme is on our Bridging the Gap Plan. And finally, on Monday night at Clearwater High School, we'll have one in partnership with the Hispanic Outreach Center for Clearwater, focusing on our Spanish-speaking families. A number of events coming up for families and the public to know about, starting in October with our In Your Neighborhood events, October fourth and fifth, where we have open houses for parents to explore their neighborhood school and see what our neighborhood schools have to offer. As we kick off our district application programs, that will happen later in October, but first we start with the neighborhood school. The neighborhood school should be the first choice, and we want to showcase those for our families. Our district application program fairs will take place in mid and late October, and our discovery nights will happen soon thereafter in December through mid-January, and we're planning multiple events online to help families, both with neighborhood schools and the application process. Also want to highlight some upcoming open houses with our Pinellas Technical Colleges. They offer more than sixty programs and provide training in forty career clusters. The Clearwater Campus Open House will be on September twenty-seventh, the St. Petersburg Campus on October eleventh. Check our newsroom for more information. And finally, as I've continued to do, I want to highlight one of our employees as the superintendent standout, and this board meeting is Kathy Crannick, the Library Media Technology Specialist at Northwest Elementary School. She's been at Northwest since two thousand and five as a teacher, both the classroom and varying exceptionalities, but this is her first year as the Library Technology Media Specialist. And this month, as we've rolled out our core value responsibility and core values at her school earlier this month, and she encouraged employees to submit our PCS praise so that folks could know how important they are to one another. And on, in the next two days, we received five submissions from Ms. Crannick for her work at Northwest Elementary. And just one, I want to just read just a brief bit about that. One said Ms. Crannick works tirelessly to ensure students and staff have both the library materials, books, and technology needed for a successful school year. She jumped in feet first in her first year, troubleshooting every issue that arose during the new FAST testing rollout, and helping teachers get time in the media center at the same time. Her commitment with integrity and exemplary representation of core values as a dedicated member of Pinellas County should be recognized. Congratulations to Ms. Crannick, and thank you to all our employees on a job well done.
Items introduced by the school board attorney?
I have no report today, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Items introduced by the board. Ms. Carr, Dr. Carr?
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to, I recently attended our Homeless Leadership Alliance, Coordinated Care, it was the Homeless Leadership, and then the title changed, I should have had that already under my belt, the new name, but the, just some updated information, the annual report was shared, which is compiled by Dr. St. Lucia, who also, I think, does some of our work with Title I for our own accountability elements and evaluations. And one of the key things that they reported on was the increase in homelessness amongst Pinellas County school students. And just to reiterate some of the pieces, some of those findings, in terms of the percentage of students now homeless within our school district, it has increased substantially, going from around two percent to about four percent of our students are designated as homeless. So I don't want us to keep that out of the limelight and in the forefront of our minds. I appreciate that it, we have moved to include it under Goal Four as four point six in accelerating achievement and specifically addressing homeless academic performance, and I wanted to share an additional finding that I thought was very relevant and for us to be aware of. One of the pieces they found also amongst affordable housing in this county, how the housing rate has gone up over twenty-eight percent, and the numbers of, number of homes purchased to be used as businesses, so not primary residence, and the increase of that, and how that has also driven the cost of living up considerably, which has substantial impact on those individuals who are in professions where the, the salaries have not been able to keep up with the cost of living, specifically in homeownership. So that was shared around the area, also with those folks working in the nonprofit sector who provide services to homeless folks. Those folks themselves are finding them, are becoming homeless. So some of the social service providers, like case managers and those individuals who provide services to our homeless population are themselves finding, becoming homeless. So it's a critical area of concern in our community, and I wanted to make sure that I brought that information back. I will share the information with our board secretary to share with us the overall report that was given about the current state of homelessness in our county, but I just wanted to make sure that it was brought to your attention, and say thank you for, not only us including this item in our strategic plan, but also in the past year or two, the movement from our heat team being in a different division, and I'm looking at Ms. Matway, and that, that group now reports within the same division as our student services team, like our social workers, our psychologists, and our school counselors and nurses. So I'm really grateful to our district for the work it's continuing to do to address homelessness, but recognizing the doubling is important, and I hope you'll continue to keep it on the forefront in the future.
Okay, Mrs. Cook?
Earlier this evening, we did the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, so I thought it was a proper time for me to give an update on what is happening with our Hispanic Achievement Committee that we have. We have several partnerships that are working with us to help get children into preschool, making sure that they're, you know, registering for preschool and things like that, so that they come ready. But we have people from St. Pete College, from UCF, we have the Hispanic Outreach Committee, representatives from that, we have administrators, we have teachers, I serve on it, obviously, and there are just a number of people that are all working together and checking every area, and how can we make sure the children are gaining the proper services that they need, but most importantly, are they academically moving forward? We have increased the number of students that have actually registered, Hispanic students that have registered for preschool and kindergarten, so we're making progress, we're seeing progress with the graduation rates, those are, you know, really on track, and that's been a great area of achievement. But Natasha Karik is the one that heads that up for us and has that committee, so I want to thank her, recognize her, and also thank everybody that I have named, as well as those that I have not named, that serve on that committee, because it's, it's been very valuable over the past six years that, that has been working. I mentioned earlier during our legislative meeting that the consortium met, and we have a draft proposal coming forward. I did not bring that because I didn't want to confuse it with the other legislative things that we're doing, but I've asked, and Mr. Hendrick said that, you know, he would put it on the next agenda. So you will receive a copy of that in its entirety prior to, so you have a chance to read it, and then you'll also see it on the agenda, the thing in its entirety, and we'll be able to vote on it. We can vote on the items, we can vote yes or no on any item, but we cannot amend it. And then what we approve will move forward to the consortium. It'll be meshed with all of the others, and all of them that are approved by all eleven coastal districts, those will be the ones that the consortium moves forward. So we did a lot of work on it, and I think we have a pretty good statement coming forward. Mr. Hendrick mentioned the fall workshop, and I want to tell you what a good job he did, and how many people came up and said, there's so much energy, and it was so fresh, and although they love Dr. Grego, they are so excited about the new chapter and how he's moving forward, so thank you for being there, you did a great job, and I'm looking forward to just having a wonderful year of parent involvement, parent participation, and, and anything that we can do to move that along, I think would be beneficial, so thank you.
Wonderful. Ms. Heinrich?
Thank you. You know, in our last school board meeting, I shared some thoughts around teacher pay, around remuneration, and I don't, I'm not sure anybody really actually hears them, but since I see so many amazing teachers here today, I thought maybe I would share those thoughts again. And what those essentially are, is that I've been on this school board about two years now, and the reason I ran for school board is because of how strongly I believe in teachers, and that thriving teachers mean thriving classrooms, thriving communities, thriving society. I believe that deeply. And since I've been up here and I've gotten to know the people who sit up here, the people who sit over here, and the people who lead, everybody does, every single person up here. Every single person, every single person I have worked with cares deeply, believes deeply in our teachers, and wants nothing more to have the best remuneration possible. So I've also learned a lot about our budget. Of course, I studied it before I tried to run for school board, but, you know, I'm sure that you all have studied it as well, so you can see how the money from our state is very specifically allocated. We have to spend these dollars in very certain places, right? And if you stay for the budget hearing, you're going to see some nice pie charts that show where the, where the revenue comes out and where the expenses go, right? Or where the revenue comes in, expenses out, money in, money out. We all have to manage this ourselves in our regular lives. So we have money in, and the money comes in from the state, from the county, a little bit from federal, right? And a lot of those have very particular rules attached to them, and then money out, all of our, all of our expenses, and you can see that, it's all transparent, you can see where every dollar in this district is spent. What I would love is some ideas about how we can either increase the money in or change the money out. Tell me, tell us, right? It takes about nine million dollars for each one percent raise for our staff. Show us, tell us the nine million dollars you think that we can cut. You want us to reduce, well, we can't reduce transportation, and well, we could reduce some transportation, but there are a certain number of dollars that are from the state that have to go to transportation, or safe schools, or mental health. I, and what I also asked for in the last school board meeting was I asked for our bargaining teams, both, you know, the units and our district here, to please come to an agreement as soon as possible, but for us to put our best foot forward. And I know I've seen some updates from the superintendent's office, thank you, to put our best foot forward so that we don't drag this out this year, the way that it was dragged out last year, and everybody's waiting for it to get settled. Let's get this settled, best foot forward, and then give us ideas, help me, help us, help us, whether it's advocate for additional dollars from our state legislators, if, if we want to go to the voters for additional referendum dollars, I mean, thank the Lord, they, that, that we, you know, overwhelmingly pass this referendum, right, every, every four years. That goes tremendously towards teacher salaries. So I guess I just want to say that, you know, especially with Dr. Carr mentioning inflationary pressures, they are everywhere. People that I work with and talk with, they are everywhere, and they are real, and they are on our teachers, and we know that, and we feel it. And I would just love to be able to work together to talk about how do we make it better? How do we either change our dollars out and redirect, what's possible to be redirected? What programs do you think, you know, do not lead directly to student outcomes? Or how do we get those additional dollars in and better advocate for how we can have more professional, stronger remuneration for the people that make this community and make our society what it is? So I just, I wanted to share those thoughts with all of you today, and also say thank you. Thank you for what you do every day, for both my kids and everybody else's kids in this community, so thank you for being here.
Any other board members before I go? All right. You were just given a copy of the twenty-three, twenty-four instructional calendar. This is a draft, and you will notice that school will begin on August tenth, and there will be six preschool days. You will also notice that every month, there's a day where students are off, but teachers will, will be doing things like catching up on their grades, maybe taking some coursework. But we spread it out so that it gives them an opportunity to unwind a little bit, and I think it's an awesome idea. And the end of school will be August thirtieth. You can see that we have two makeup days, in case there's a hurricane. And it shows you when the four-day work week comes, and we discuss things like November, Thanksgiving, not, not giving the employees Monday and Tuesday, and they work, no, students will have off, but they will work. I think, we've been doing this now for twenty years, and I don't think it's going to be an easy, probably not a good transition, because families plan that time, including teachers, they plan that time to be with their families. There's two weeks at Christmas. So I want you to spend the next couple of days until next week's workshop, kind of diving into the calendar, and if there are any changes that we'd like to make, we'll discuss it at the workshop, Ms. Texel will be there and lead the discussion, and then it will come to a vote, probably at the September some, maybe September twenty-seventh meeting? Okay. So any questions, just save them for next week, and we will have a discussion. Okay?
Madam Chair, if I may, this is posted with our school board workshop materials, which is next week, so that's online now, for the members of the public can see it as well, and then we'll have an opportunity to comment on it when we bring it for a board vote.
Because believe it or not, parents are asking, when do we, when do we, and when do we start next year? They're making plans already. So that's all I have. All right. Dr. Corbett, do we have any board requests?
Yes, Madam Chair, I did have the one request that we will put the consortium proposal on the September
on the September 27th board meeting as an agenda item for your review.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to close this part of the meeting, and we will do our evaluation We will then, at 6:30, have our budget hearing. So we have about 20 minutes for a break. Oh, no, public hearing first. Okay, let's see, how many speakers do we have?
Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick, we currently have 31 speakers signed up for general public comment.
Okay. So we'll do 10 minutes of public speakers, and then at 6:20, we'll take a break so that everyone can, you know, stretch and do whatever they need to before the 6:30 positive start for the board, for the budget hearing, okay? All right, so Ms. Hauck, who are the first two speakers?
The first two speakers are Ms. Angela Taylor Sweet and Matt Crossman.
I adjourn this meeting of September 13th.
The Urban Technology Institute requests Pinellas County schools to comply with court Bridging the achievement gap.
When we examine the American education system's state of affairs, a due diligence that has escaped fireside chats and state of the union for decades. Meanwhile, the active pursuit of tyrannical control is at the mercy of a political machine committed to anarchy, treason punishable by the fullest extent of the law, instituting the most diabolical workforce development, dehumanizing animal servitude that weakened the continent of Africa and consequently divided nations. The transatlantic slave trade perpetuated a seamless lucrative slave economy worldwide, primarily West Africans. Their smooth dark skin charted with the chains of injustice. With blood, sweat, and tears, built up a nation's base owners, although convicted of faith, chose to look the other way to embrace the most lucrative capital venture ever after the Civil War.
All right, I need everyone to take your seat, please. We need to get started. Take your seats, please.
Welcome to chit chat in the lobby.
Yes, I need for you guys to get quiet. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of two public hearings on the 2223 budget. We are here tonight to review the proposed property tax rates and the budget of the 2223 school year. Hear comments from the public and approve the proposed mileage rates and the budget. The order of business enactions taken tonight must follow specific directions set forth in the state statutes, and we ask for your cooperation as we go through this legally required format. There will be two opportunities for you to speak this evening. First, you may comment on the proposed mileage rates, and second, you may comment on the proposed budget. If you wish to speak, you must register separately for each part of the hearing with our staff members at the entrance to the boardroom. On behalf of the school board and the superintendent, I thank each of you for taking the time to be here tonight to share your views with us. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All right. And I'm going on the shed, do I? No. Okay. All right. All those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes. All right. Mr. Hendrick and staff will make some introductory comments prior to the presentation and before we hear comments from the public. Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board members. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your input into the budget process, starting at the June 28th School Board workshop, all the questions that you had then, those that you had at our first hearing on July 26th, where the tentative mileage rates and preliminary budget were first approved. As you know, the budget is tied to our district strategic plan, which you earlier approved tonight. The budget before you tonight is for the final proposed budget and the mileage rates for this 2223 fiscal year in accordance with state statutes and procedures that guide our work as a school district. And so I'd like to pass it over to our chief financial officer, Mr. Kevin Smith, for more details. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick, Madam Chair, school board members. As was mentioned, this is the second and final hearing on the district mileage and budget. The format and order of tonight's hearing presentations are prescribed by chapter 200 of the Florida statutes and must follow a specific order. The materials available at the first public hearing in July provide comparative information relative to the projected fiscal year closeout. The 2023 fiscal year has been closed, and the actual results are reflected in the second public hearing documents. As we have discussed many times this year, we are all experiencing the effects of inflation. The district is also subject to those inflationary pressures. We have experienced increased energy and fuel costs, increased materials and supply costs, as well as increases in maintenance and construction costs. In addition, we will incur increased costs for our employee health insurance, as well as the required contribution for the Florida retirement system on behalf of our employees. The Florida legislature also passed a law this year requiring the minimum wage for Florida school districts to be $15 per hour by October 1st, 2022. That's approximately four years ahead of the constitutional amendment that was passed a couple of years ago. While it is an absolutely good thing for our employees to have that increase in wages, and we're fully in favor of it, this is yet another requirement that comes without specific funding, and we have to find money to fund it. All of these factors and more present challenges when formulating this budget. We will continue to examine our budget to maximize the effectiveness of the spending decisions we make, as well as to continue to increase the salaries of our employees, as we did in each of the last 10 years, including last year, by the way, when we increased salaries for teachers, support, professional Texas supervisory employees and administrators by 3.25%, retroactive back to the 1st of July, in addition to picking up the entire cost of health insurance last fiscal year. At this time, I'd like Ms. Luanne Jordan, Executive Director of Budget and Resource Allocation, to present the mileage, and then she'll present the budget subsequent to that. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Mr. Hendrick, Madam Chair, board members, and staff. Truth and Milage, also referred to as TRIM, requires school districts to advertise their proposed budget and mileage rates annually. The district's 202223 mileage is comprised of the general operating mileage, which includes the required local effort discretionary and local referendum. The Florida Department of Education determines the maximum state required local effort mileage rate that must be levied by the school board to generate its local share of funding for the district. The local referendum of .5 mils was initially approved by the voters in 2005, 2006, and was approved for the fifth time in 2020, 21 for a four-year period. The proposed mileage also includes the 1.5 mils for capital outlay. A mil refers to the rate of property tax commonly paid on the assessed value of homes and business properties. A mil equates to $1 of taxes for every $1,000 of taxable property value. The rollback rate is the mileage rate that would generate the same amount of revenue as last year if applied to the current tax rule after adjusting for new construction. The 202223 proposed mileage of 5.963 is higher than the rollback rate by 10.01%. Pinellas County's gross property tax value of approximately $125 billion is an increase from last year's value by $19.1 billion, or 18%.
Just want to make a comment or two on this slide if I can. The taxable value has been increasing significantly, or regularly, I should say, over the last several years, and increased significantly last year. Mitigating that, however, is the constant reduction of the required local effort by the legislature. So although the taxable value is going up, our tax rates have regularly gone down over the last several years, which we'll see in the next slide, and I'll comment on that as well. Ms. Jordan?
The proposed mileage rate for 202223 of 5.963 represents an overall decrease of 5.72% when compared to the 202122 total mileage rate of 6.325. The required local effort mileage has decreased by 10.12%.
So if you refer to, if you have your budget document, you refer to page, I believe it's nine, there's a historical chart which shows the mileage rates that have been levied over the last, actually, I wouldn't say the number of years, it's back to 1970, 71. This mileage rate that we're requesting that you approve tonight is the lowest mileage rate, or will be the lowest mileage rate approved, going back as far as 1970 and 71. In addition to that, the required local effort, coupled with my comment a moment ago, required local effort has decreased regularly over the last several years, from 2011, 2012 to present. It's gone down each and every year. So every time that required local effort decreases, it doesn't allow us to take advantage of the increased property tax value fully, as municipalities can. For example, Pinellas County Government, City of Clearwater, they have the same taxable value increase that we do. However, if they set the same mileage rate this year that they set last year, they give the ring in significantly more in revenue. We are limited by the legislature as to what we can levy.
The property tax revenue comparison reflects an increase in revenue of $72.4 million over last year's proceeds. This is the result of the increase in our property tax value. The required local effort proceeds are increasing by about $22 million. The proposed discretionary mileage will generate about $13.7 million more. The referendum will yield an additional $9.2 million, and the capital outlay mileage will generate $27.5 million more than last year.
So I just want to point out a couple of numbers on this slide, if I may. Sorry, Ms. Jordan. The number of $72.3 million is, in fact, the increase of the taxes that we will collect. However, it's comprised of a few different elements. If you travel up from that number above it, the first number above it is $27.05 million. That's our local capital outlay mileage levy, which is the 1.5 mils that we're statutorily allowed to levy for capital outlay and infrastructure. That money is utilized to improve our buildings, for new construction, to buy equipment, buses, and the like. It is also used to pay for our debt service payments. As you know, we have some bonds outstanding. The capital outlay mileage that we levy pays for the debt service payments on those bonds. This funding source is limited in what it can be used for by state statute 101171, and it's very prescriptive as to what the money can be spent upon. It's important to note that this money cannot be spent on operating expenses like salaries. The next number up is the $44.8 million, which is comprised of the three numbers above it. The local referendum increase of $9.2 million, as you recall, the referendum was specifically approved to help improve teachers, to recruit teachers, and so 80% of that dollar amount goes to our teachers' salaries. In fact, this year, that dollar amount will go up by approximately $359 per teacher as part of the referendum, bringing that total up to $5,734. Also, we have to share that revenue with our charter schools. The additional sharing that we'll have to provide to them this year is about $800,000. So that leaves the other two funding sources that we have, which is approximately $35 million, which is a decent amount of money. But as I mentioned, the inflationary pressures, that money will be utilized for many different things. For example, the $15 an hour wage increase, that's about a $7.2 million increase in expenditures to us estimated. Increase in health insurance costs that the board is absorbing, that's about $6.5 million. I mentioned to you in the past about the family empowerment scholarships, and for those in the audience, family empowerment scholarships, are those scholarships that are available to students who wish to go to a private school and they can get state FEFP funding to pay for those education. Last year, it increased significantly by nearly $20 million over the prior year. Next year, we have an estimate that that's going to go up, along with McKay, of between $11 and $12 million. Also, our charter schools are growing, so I'm estimating charter school growth to be about $3.5 million going into next year. FRS, as I mentioned a moment ago, is going up about $4 million. And of course, we have inflationary pressures that we have to deal with as well, and of course, not the least of which is our employee salary increases. Our objective is to increase our salaries as much as possible, and much of this money will go toward that objective.
Under the proposed rate, the owner of a $200,000 home, after the deduction of the $25,000 homestead exemption, would pay $1,043.53 in school taxes. This averages out to $2.86 per day. Taxable value of property in Pinellas County reflects an increase, on average, of 18% for the year. The Florida legislature has set our required local effort, also referred to as RLE, to 3.215, which is a decrease from the prior year's RLE of 3.577. Some homeowners may experience an increase in their school taxes, as demonstrated here, as a result of an increase in property value and not an increase to our levied mileage rate. Please note that the example above does not consider the benefit of the 3% save our homes cap. The RLE is an appropriated amount set by the Florida Department of Education. The school board must levy this amount in order to receive state funding. It is used for the day-to-day operations, such as school staff and utilities. The discretionary mileage is used for general operations of the school district and to meet additional costs due to inflation. Local referendum funds are used to recruit and retain quality teachers, preserve reading, art, and music programs, and provide up-to-date textbooks and technology. The capital outlay mileage is the district's primary funding source for maintenance, renovations, new construction, and equipment, as advertised on July 24th. At this time, I'll turn the meeting back to the board chair to allow for public comment and for the motions necessary to adopt the mileage rate.
Mrs. Howe, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two speakers for Agenda Item 5. We have Nancy Velardi and Andrea Dort.
I actually had put in for the next one, but this is fine. Good evening. I'm fond of a quote by our President Joe Biden, which is simply this: Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I will tell you what you value. And right now, all we are asking is for you to value your people, the ones who take direct care of the students above all else. What PCTA wants to see for Pinellas is the very same thing that I'm sure you wish to see, and that is highly qualified teachers and support professionals in all classrooms, full slates of mental health professionals to provide guidance and support for our traumatized children, as well as safe transportation to and from our schools, fully-staffed kitchens to feed our children, fully-staffed plant operation teams to keep our schools clean and healthy. In order to assure that these things occur, we must prioritize all the people who do the daily work to service our students as they deserve. To that end, we must also make sure employees do not fall into unpaid status when dealing with COVID. We must include COVID in the sick leave bank and keep them paid. Our profession is one of the five that has seen the most trauma since the pandemic began, not only in our students, but in the adults as well. Trauma is simply the reactions to significant events and the stress surrounding those events. Educators have been experiencing mounting stress for years as their workload has cumulatively increased, and in dealing with the rising number of students facing their own private traumas. The pandemic was merely the icing on a rapidly decaying cake. The exorbitant increase in local living expenses on top of the things I've already mentioned is the tipping point causing us to lose mentioned is the tipping point causing us to lose employees, not only because it is the right thing to do, we must support them, not only because it is the right thing to do, but to make Pinellas the district where teachers long to come to teach. We must go above and beyond the usual generosity previously shown by this district and help them make that choice to stay. We are fully aware of the constraints you face, the consistent low funding of public schools by our legislature. Florida just received the highest rating for low funding of public schools. And the fact that huge portions of that low funding must be shaved off for charter and private schools. We understand the horrible laws that they have put in place that make the veteran teachers receive 25% less of a raise than newer teachers. But even within those constraints, the people must be your priority, for without them, we have nothing left to offer our students.
Good evening. I agree with the increase for our millage. Personally, I would prefer to have the utmost highest increase in our millage rate allowed by law, since the only way to compensate for the lack of state funding increases have, because they have not increased for the last 10, 10 years, a decade, for cost of living. So our local millage increases are necessary. They are required in order to increase our pay. And as was stated, yes, the average teacher might have received a 3.25% increase in their salary last year, but not every teacher. As stated earlier, the increase was not equal or equitable rate due again to the horrible legislation of the Florida Senate House that pits the fact that we have at-will employees versus veteran employees, who would prefer to have a contract from year to year instead of every year, not knowing for sure if we would have a contract from year to year. That's why they're called at-will employees. But I'm going to call them at-will professionals, because you only hire professionals in Pinellas County schools. So with the professionals who don't have reoccurring contractual security and the experienced teachers who are highly effective, as stated, received a 25% less increase than the highly effective at-will professionals. And we know this legislation is bad, so we try to bargain every year to compensate for these bad laws. So I just want to make sure we're aware of these bad laws, and the public should be aware of them too. The more often we say it, maybe the officials that have been elected into office will no longer be elected. So not being someone who wants to not be considered a veteran highly effective professional, I am not giving away that status. I do not want a 25% increase in my pay just so I can be an at-will professional. So of course, we want to increase the millage, and you're going to do that tonight. And I want you to be looking at the budget as best you can so that we can have about a 5% average increase in our salary this year. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more speakers? Our next speaker, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Mark Clutho.
As usual, speaking out of both sides of your mouth, when you first started this hearing, what did I hear? Energy costs. Yes, well, you know, it's a cause and effect thing. When you make stupid buildings, you have big energy costs. And then you're going to be putting money towards the buildings. Well, you're going to be putting the money the wrong way, towards the wrong buildings. So what does that say? This money that's going to be levied is going the wrong way. When I say you're talking out of both sides of your mouth, yeah, well, you're talking about costs going down, but it's going up because the values of the people's property is increasing. So what's really, maybe it's the same, maybe it's not, but the bottom line is, people are being ripped off because they're not getting a good value for their money. Do they really have to pay those energy costs? The money's being wasted. That's the bottom line, because science is ignored. More to come.
There are no more speakers for this agenda item.
Okay. May I have a motion and a second for approval of the discretionary local effort millage? Okay. No, I need a second first, and then we'll...
Second.
I moved that the board approved the levy... Oh, sorry. I'm a little out of sync here. I moved that the board approved the levying of the discretionary local effort millage of 0.748 mils as part of the total millage to be certified to the property appraiser and the Department of Revenue.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we need a second? No, I had, okay. Dudley and Cook were my, okay. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And one no. Okay. Moving right along, that's five. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Six to one. Ms. Edman, will you read Item 5.2, Approval of the Discretionary Local?
Mr. Dudley just read that.
Oh, okay. Then you guys, okay. All right. I have a motion and a second to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the levying of the discretionary local efforts fund, millage of 0.748 mils as part of the total millage to be certified to the property appraiser of Florida and the Department of Revenue. And we already, okay, you guys switched. Okay. May I have a motion and a second for adoption of the total millage rates?
Yes. I move that the board adopt the millage rates of 5.9630 mils to be set and certified to the property appraiser and to the Florida Department of Revenue. The millage rates are as follows. For required local effort, 3.215 mils. For discretionary local effort, 0.48 mils. For local referendum, 0.500 mils. For capital outlay, 1.500 mils. The total millage is 5.963 mils. This is a rate of 10.01% higher than the rollback rate.
You did the motion, but we didn't get anyone to do the second.
Correct. Now it's time for a second.
Second.
All right. This rate is 10.01% higher than the rollback rate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any noes? Okay, so it passes six to one. All right, so now I'm going to return back to Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you. This portion of the presentation covers the district's proposed budget for 2022-23. The budget calendar is ongoing throughout the year. During the course of the year, budget updates are provided at board workshops and monitoring is performed through budget analyses and forecasts. In the spring, we typically have a better idea of what the legislative budget is providing for us, whether we can expect an increase or a decrease in state funds. Budget steering committee meetings are held during this timeframe, primarily for capital outlay requests. In July and September, we hold two public hearings regarding the budget and millage. As mentioned earlier, the first hearing was held on July 26, and tonight is the second of those hearings. Certain parameters guide the building of the budget. We strive to and have been able to maintain a 63-37 ratio. This means at least 63% of all expenses are for direct instruction or in the classroom, and 37% are related to other areas, such as instructional support, plant operations, and administration. In short, at least 2/3 of all funding goes toward expenditures in the classroom. We are required by statute to maintain a minimum 3% contingency, while district policy states we are to maintain a minimum 5% contingency. This budget maintains our compliance with district policy. We also budget so as to support our core curriculum and strategic directions. The majority of our budget is in our general fund. This year, it's proposed to be approximately $1 billion. The second-largest funding source is capital outlay at $343 million. The district's self-insured health fund is anticipated to be approximately $170 million and represents the district's third-largest fund. The total proposed budget for all funds this year is approximately $1.8 billion. Looking at the budget summary for all revenue sources, you see that about 56% of the total budget comes from the general fund. Capital outlay accounts for approximately 19%. The combined total of these two funds comprises approximately 75% of our entire budget. The new year brings several legislative changes. The base student allocation, or BSA, increased to $4,587.40. This is an increase of $214.49, or 4.9% over last year's BSA. Statewide, funding increased by $1.7 billion, or $35.2 million, to Pinellas. Changes in the Florida retirement system contribution rate are projected to increase district expenditures by $4 million. Lastly, as Mr. Smith mentioned earlier, is the increase of the minimum wage to $15 per Total operating fund resources are anticipated to be approximately $1 billion. Of that, about $562 million comes from local sources, which includes the half-mil referendum. $316 million comes from state sources. The Florida Education Finance Program, or FEFP, is the general fund's primary funding source. The FEFP funding formula uses a combination of state and local resources to fund education. Looking at the operating revenue budget graphically, you'll note that local sources represent about 56% of the total operating budget, and state sources account for approximately 31%. The remaining 13% comes from transfers and fund balance. The operating budget is used to fund the day-to-day operating expenditures of the district, which pays for salaries and benefits, supplies and materials, textbooks, student transportation, utilities, maintenance, and repairs. Viewing the distribution of our operating budget by object, there's little change from previous years. About 59% of our budget is spent on salaries and 22% on benefits. In total, 81% of our operating budget goes toward staffing. Capital outlay funds include revenue from both state and local sources. This fund reflects the revenue and expenditures for construction and renovation of school buildings and grounds. The majority of these funds are generated by the local capital improvement millage, which is set by law and limited to 1.5 mils. These funds may not be used for operating purposes, rather, they may only be used for capital outlay purposes, as advertised. PICO funds are not expected this year for traditional district schools. Additional funds have been provided through certificate of participation, or COPS bonds. The least purchase financing of capital improvements through the issuance of COPS bonds is a technique frequently utilized by Florida school districts to finance school facilities. Our proposed capital outlay budget is approximately $343 million. The budget reflects $191 million in new revenue and $319 million in proposed appropriations. The special revenue budget is comprised of two major categories of federal funds, contracted programs, and food service. The total contracted programs budget is approximately $173 million. This budget starts the year off low and builds as the year goes on, as we don't recognize the revenue until it is available. Included in this category are the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, and the American Rescue Plan Grants. These grants are also referred to as CARES, ESER, and ARP. It is important to note these grants are limited, non-recurring revenue sources. Food service is a self-sustaining fund as it receives no financial support from the operating fund. Federal reimbursement and local collections are the primary revenue sources. The proposed food service budget is approximately $72 million. The debt service fund is used to account for the payment of general long-term debt, principal, and interest. This $8.5 million budget represents the debt service for COPS bonds issued by the district in 2017 and 2021. The proposed self-insured workers' compensation and liability budget of $5 million accounts for the premium revenue and expenditures associated with the district's self-insured workers' compensation and liability insurance programs. The self-insured health fund accounts for the district's premium revenue and claim expenditures with a budget of approximately $170 million. The proposed budget and all supporting documents are on file in the Office of Budget and Resource Allocation. This information can also be found online. At this point, I'll turn the meeting back to the board chair to allow for public comment and the motions necessary to adopt the proposed budget. Thank you.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have speakers for this agenda item. Ms. Velardi, I did have a separate card for you for this item.
They told me I had to put another one, so I put the second one out, but no, I don't need to.
Okay. Then our next two speakers are Shirley Patterson and Elle McCullough.
Shirley? Yes. 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 Good evening. I'm Shirley Patterson, Support Staff. I'd come before you just to say that, as a Support Staff, I do deserve, deserve a decent rate of salary. With the student in college and being a single parent and the rise in costs of rent, just simply ask, as a Support Staff, needing and deserving a decent salary. Thank you.
When politicians create policies that provide significant raises to new employees while leaving experienced employees behind, they know exactly what they're doing. We cannot let politicians succeed by turning on each other. Instead, we must remain united, I mean, the board and the teachers and all the other staff of this Pinellas County schools. We need to demand all educators be paid a professional salary that will allow us to afford to live in the community we work. Florida ranks 48th in average salaries, we know this. The average salary in Florida is $51,000. The average in the United States is $65,293. I'm a 29-year teacher. I don't make that yet. I'm not even close. 29 years. I don't even make the average for the United States. This is our allocation from the state budget. There was $137 million, Laura Hines, that was not in a category, so it could be put towards salaries. That was not put in, that's directly from the state. It's the most money we've gotten from the state ever, and that money could be put into salaries. Kevin, that's where we need to get our money from, okay? I'm really tired of being... I'm really tired of being, uh, listening to the, um, the bargaining unit. Politextile, Lori Dart, Kevin Smith, tell us, we don't have any money for teachers. When he says 3.25%, I get a 2% raise. I didn't even get close to 3.25. So when you say 3.25, everybody in the district but me got that raise. I'm really struggling as a teacher. How is it that I teach for 29 years and I still am struggling? After this last year, the raise I got didn't even cover the gas. Think about that. My house can sell for an ungodly amount of money, and I can pay off my mortgage and go to Pasco County, where they got a 5.4% raise, and they're going to get a referendum. Kurt Browning said he's going to steal all the teachers. He might be right. Seriously. Hillsboro, since they can't pay, afford their teachers, they are going to look at a four-day work week. What are we doing since we can't substantially help our teachers and educators, attract educators to this area? What are we going to do? Think about it. If you can't give us a decent raise, what are you going to do?
The next two speakers are Cindy Artunez and Mark Clutho.
Hi. Good evening. Um, I want to speak upon the budget, and I'm a support professional. I'm in education for about 10 years, but working for the county about three. I would say that we just need to have a better salary. I do, I do hold a bachelor's and so on, but I would say just a better salary overall, that's why I'm here at my workplace, is that we just need for us just to live a livable, like, life, sustentative life, like the previous lady is saying about, like, we live in Pinellas County. Like, Pinellas County is getting expensive every single year, as you can see the real estate market and so on. Um, but I would say just, like, put our, like, pay raise higher, because $15, like, you can go to Wawa or, like, Walmart. But I love my job, and that's why I say I do have enough experience and other things that I can go on, but I love my job, that's why I stay here. And also, speaking about all the other people that work, because we are a team. We're all a team here. You're a team, we're a team, and we make an amazing team. I would say that, like, and for food, if for our kids, there needs to be, like, bigger portions, because my kids will come to me, they're like, "Oh, I'm so hungry." So I pay for food, so they can have more food, because you know what I mean? If your kid is hungry, you're going to, like, give them food and so on. But also, we just need to look at more resources, because remember, we are, like, teaching our kids, but we also are teaching, like, the person. We are building that person, because one day, they're going to be little, but as I say, girl, they're coming bigger and bigger and being part of more of our community as a whole, because guess what? They're going to be adults like you. They might even set up here too. And also might join our profession. But, um, so that's what I'm saying, is like, help, like, help your staff so we can be there for our students, because you, we got to take care of one another. And also, because, like, another thing is that how we're helping our kids, we need to help our parents, which also outcomes to help our community overall. Because, you know, we want to be known as, like, the best school district, not just in the state of Florida, but in the county. Thank you so much for your time, and also I wanted to say to you is that I did read your article in the Tampa Bay Magazine. I felt like it was, like, personable, and I got to know you, a glimpse of you, and I thought you had a beautiful picture. And also, um, I had you in middle school, and I love to see that you grow. You grew and you cultivated to where you are now, and I heard great things about you too. So thank you for your time. Have a wonderful night.
Mark Clutho Largo. Look at these figures, I'm sure you teachers will love them. For the board, you have $2.5 million. Hmm, that's nice. And for the, uh, general administration, $3.8 million. That's money well spent. And then for school administration, you have, uh, $65 million. Yeah, that's good money spent. When my wife used to teach, she used to say, "Just let us teach." And, uh, you know, the administrators, they're, uh, they're hard at work, you know, so they need all that money. And then we have facilities acquisition and construction. Well, see, there's a big problem there. You know, as stated before, energy costs. Well, see, when you're making all these stupid buildings, like as I mentioned before, that building up there at Clearwater High School with all that west glass, with that solar radiation bombarding it, huh, you're going to have energy cost. You know, you orient the building the wrong way, like this, when it should be this way. That's sheer stupidity. You know, you don't think it's going to affect the budget? That's sheer irresponsibility. You know, then you have your operation of plant, $95 million. Yeah, well, cause and effect. The maintenance of plant, $21 million. And debt service, $9.2 million. Well, you know, those costs, they just keep coming and coming. You know, you're being irresponsible. And the plant is burning. It's a bad legacy. Bad legacy.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no more speakers for this item.
May I have a motion and a second for approval of the final budget for the 2022-23 school year?
I move that the board approve the final...
I need a motion and a second.
I move...
You move, okay.
Making a motion. I move that the board approve the final 2022-23 budget as presented.
Do I have a second? Dr. Carr, okay. All right, now, Ms. Heine, sorry. You are, okay. All right. I, we have a motion and a second to approve of the final budget. Let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Are there any noes? Okay. Passes six to one. Okay, may I have a motion and a second for adoption of resolution determining revenues and millage levy? I need a motion.
I move that the board adopt the required resolution as presented without formal reading.
Okay. Are there any board discussions?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to state, uh, the reason for, um, my, um, my vote no on this, and, um, my heart goes out to the many, many people who are sitting in their audience tonight, because they bring up a very, very valid point about the, uh, inflation in our county and where we live, and how expensive it is to live and breathe in this county, and for those on a teacher's salary, it's becoming harder and harder each and every year. And when I look at the budget, um, I understand the figures, but at the end of the day, we are asking our community, not just our teachers, but our community, to increase, um, what they're giving and increase their, their taxes. And there are so many in our community who were not given help during this last two years. We, as a school board, I believe, were, we were given state funds, we were given federal funds to help us through, um, the end of the pandemic and throughout this year. Those funds are being used to support our school system in Pinellas, but there are many community members who weren't given that kind of help and are living on a very meager budget. And so I feel like at this time, it is not a good time to increase, uh, our requirements of the community. And I would, and that is the reason for my vote for no, and I, um, my heart goes out to each and every one of you who are fighting for that pay raise, because it is very important with the increase in our inflation to be able to survive in Pinellas County moving forward, so. That being said, thank you all very much.
Dr. Carr?
Thank you, and I am supporting this vote. And I'd like to point out on slide 21 that was shared with us about the operating budget revenue sources and the percentage that comes from our local of 55.73. So while the millage rate, because of the value of the home, tax would increase, but the millage rate itself is not increased. So if you could compare that to sales tax of an item, if I chose to purchase a sweater that cost one amount, my tax would be at the 7%. However, if I had a more expensive sweater, then that's, my tax would be higher. Therefore, as property values go up, the cost that the person would be paying would in fact increase. So there, it's oftentimes misunderstood whether we're raising taxes or not raising taxes. So in order to illustrate that point, however, I think it's so important that we point out that without incre, without keeping the millage rate where it needs to be, that's a large portion of our operating bud, budget, which is what goes to pay salaries. So I just don't want to be remiss in illustrating that the importance, and, and we're limited legislatively, unlike other government agencies, which don't have the same limits that we do in how much we can raise the taxes. So while I think one dissent, you know, won't break the vote, I just think it's very important that we acknowledge, um, the, the the importance of us as local individuals who are homeowners and how much we value our teachers. That we are willing, I as a homeowner, am willing to pay my share in order to pay my teachers. And I think most individuals that I've spoken with who own homes value their teachers and therefore would be willing to keep the millage rate and recognize and understand that the value of their home has gone up, therefore their tax will increase. So I just don't want to be remiss in pointing out the substantial impact of not having millage set as high as possible.
All right. I have a motion and a second to adopt the required resolution as presented without formal reading. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes six to one. All right. There are no additional business regarding the 2022-23 budget, so I adjourn this meeting.